All right, very good. It is seven oh two P M. And I'm going to start the Dartmouth Planning Board meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty four with a roll call vote. Margaret Sweet?
Yeah.
Kevin Estes?
Here.
Lori Ann Miller?
Here.
Kevin Mello present, absent is Nick Cyclepatis. And we have one vacant seat. As a reminder, tonight's meeting is being recorded and taped. On our first agenda item, application to modify, amend, or rescind an approval, an approved definitive subdivision plan, Claritin Estates.
This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing portion of the meeting. So we want to go into the public hearing and we want to waive the the reading of the legal notice unless you want me to read it into the.
Um, nope, and.
Motion to uh to open the public meeting. And wait the uh reading of the uh the notice.
Second.
Have a motion by Kevin Estes, a second by Margaret Sweet to uh waive the reading and open the public hearing. All in favor? Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Very good. Okay, so this this first item is for um uh to amend a previously approved definitive subdivision um entitled Claritin Estates. It's P A D S dash twenty four dash two on the online portal. Um, it is for one nineteen, one eleven, one oh five, ninety nine, and ninety five Claritin Streets. They are um all map one sixty, so it's lot one twenty two dash sixteen, one twenty two dash fifteen, one twenty two dash fourteen, one twenty two dash thirteen, and one twenty two dash twelve. Um, so what it is, is the um owners of those five properties within this this portion of the subdivision all have the um sidewalk on their property. So when you come down Claritin Street, they are the the five parcels on the left-hand side of Claritin Street coming down from the from Slocum Road. Um, this portion of the subdivision was done much later than the the first portion of the subdivision. The sidewalk is just along the frontage of those of those five lots or on those five lots, I should say. So we were advised by town council to have those owners bring it forward. And then when the um the owners of the entire subdivision go forward with a a street acceptance application, then they will all have to be part of it. These right now are the five that have, like I said, that have the sidewalk on their property. Um, there are issues with the drainage and with the sidewalk um in this subdivision and the acceptance of this of the roadway has not happened to date, like I said. Um, DPW has gone out and reviewed the situation and they agree that in this particular case, the sidewalk needs to come up. Um, I it's got to do with the planting of the of the trees in proximity to the sidewalk and stuff. This piece of sidewalk, I should say, does not connect to the existing older portion of Claritin Street or to any other sidewalks anywhere else in town. So it only serves these, you know, these new houses and nobody really uses it. It's in terrible condition. Um, there is a concern of um of of, you know, injury or something else happening as a result of it. The DPW cannot take the sidewalks out. It has to be done by the homeowners. So each homeowner, you know, or these five can get together and get somebody to do it, or they can each take out their own piece. But it needs to come out as the first step as part of the um plan of action going forward for this particular subdivision to apply for for a um, a street acceptance, like I said. Uh, there has not been any opposition or um or vote or any correspondence in in positive, positive for this particular subdivision, nor, like I said, there's nothing been um negative to having this happen. And again, it adds at the advice of DPW. Um, I see a number of the um of the property owners. I guess all five of them are on, actually all. There's one, there's one representative from each of the five, if you'd like to talk to them. Basically, as it stands right now, um the sidewalk is a few feet into all of their, all of their existing property lines. Um, because the roadway has not been accepted to date. Technically, um, according to the explanation I received, um, they own to the middle of the of the roadway in each case. Um, like I said, their long-term goal is to try to get this accepted. We have advised them, both myself and DPW, that they should be retaining counsel for the next portion of this as they move forward through the process and that ultimately the street acceptance program um application goes through the select board and then it's distributed to the planning board, DPW, etc. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or if anybody from the um.
I have a question.
Sure.
Christine, have you received written confirmation from all of these homeowners that this is what they want?
So I have, I have received a written signature page um for all, for the five of them that are part of this particular subdivision. All five property owners, yes, have all, they were all had to be part of the application process. Thank you. We have, and that was in everybody's packet. Um, and I put which lots they represented. So there are five and there are five, yes. And I see, I see. Like I said, I I see five people on as part of this. I'm, I don't know if they're all part of, like, not a hundred percent, but I don't know if anybody wants to put on a uh a camera or wants to speak. If you put, if there's an opportunity to raise your hand in the chat, if you have something you'd like to say as part of this. If not, we don't usually mute people for this.
Does anyone on the board have any further questions? I'm not seeing any questions. Um.
Okay, so the only other thing I would say to you, this was a requirement at the time that the subdivision was approved in um was two thousand eight. This was the 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 vision of the um former planner and the planning board at the time was that they were going to put sidewalks everywhere that connected to everything else. Um, that is no longer the case. This particular, I should also say that this particular subdivision has major um issues with the drainage easement at the um cul-de-sac portion at the the farthest um east eastern portion of the of the development.
Right.
Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the first step, it says, is to get the sidewalks done. But uh the developer that uh did this is no longer around. And I guess they have problems with drainage and maybe easements. Who's going to be responsible to bring the road up to path according to DPW standards?
Well, so that will be their homeowners association that ultimately has to take that on. So there are problems with the homeowners association in this particular um development as well. So that's why I'm saying that they have been advised to get counsel because there are many more steps to this. Um, right now, DPW cannot go in there and do any any um improvements. We have, there's no money left in this one. There's no um there are numerous issues with this particular, like I said, this particular development, and we don't want the liability as a town. Um.
So if uh you said that you you think that there's people on tonight, that uh Mister Almeda maybe or some of these other.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from one of them perhaps. And and realize if if they want to talk, um, how are they going to pay for this? Since there is no homeowners association, do they have any um estimates of what this is going to cost?
So Chad, can we get some people unmuted? I see Jeff, I see Christie. I don't know if um if the other three people that I'm seeing, um, Colleen or Mike or Prius would like to speak to this.
I can't get the chat.
Okay.
Hear me?
Yep, yes, we can.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm in Florida and I'm trying to get my video to work, but I don't think it's coming on.
Okay, we can hear you, can't see you.
Okay.
You could put your um camera on if you wanted to as well, or it's up to you.
Yeah, I can't, I'm trying to figure, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get my camera on.
Yep.
Um, my name's Chrissy Costa. I live at one oh five Claritin Street. And I've been a part of this process um for, oh, is my camera on? There we go. Um, I've been a part of this process for several years now, along with Jeff Almeda. Uh, we've been working with the DPW and Tim Barber and the planning board to try to resolve the issues that we've had on Claritin Street since we have moved into the development um to get the street approval. And I don't know if you're familiar with Claritin Street, but our developer pretty much walked away after all the homes had sold. Um, there was no money left in surety because uh it was a line of credit that had expired. Um, and there was nothing really secured for the town to come in and finish the remaining punchless items that the DPW had listed. Um, so for the last several years, we've been trying to work with the DPW. One of the most significant issues was the sidewalk piece. We've had drainage issues on a few different areas. And it was just too costly for the residents to take on um the task of trying to uh get the sidewalk fixed to the standards of the DPW. I think it was roughly around forty thousand dollars to fix the sidewalk. Um, and frankly, we have a series of large trees, if you've been down our street, that are planted in the berms. The sidewalks are all been cracking where those roots are coming um along the sidewalk areas. So um going back and forth with DPW a few years, it's best decided where there's no connection into any other sidewalk to probably remove the sidewalk and seed and mow and just have grass there. Um, the sidewalk's only on one side of the street. Um, and I think that would be in the best interest of the residents that are down there. And um to get things moving forward, we have a small punchless item um from the DPW. The residents down there have already um, we've already pulled together the money um to complete the remaining items per the DPW's uh list that we have to complete to get our final approval with the DPW for the roadway. So.
Thank you.
So we've already come together with that and we do, we do have an attorney that we're going to be moving forward with to establish the HOA um and take on the responsibilities as outlined by the planning board and the DPW, so that way we can work towards street acceptance. So I feel like we've done a good job on our part in trying to establish the steps that we need to take to move forward to even get to the street acceptance application.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, any other, any further questions? Not seeing any. Um, Christine, I believe we need a vote to close the public hearing.
I have another question, Kevin.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, DPW has has approved them removing the sidewalk. Is this going to solve their drainage issue down there or is this going to make? I mean, I'm sure he looked at it. I'm just afraid that just removing that sidewalk is going to erode any grass and and plantings that they put there. Has he definitely approved the removal of the sidewalk to help approve the um drainage issue?
Yes, I have talked to both Tim Barber and Paul Duatt, and um this will improve the, this will improve that that piece of it. Um, won't solve all of the problems, but it's definitely a start. It's not going to hurt, it's not going to hurt this anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Christie has something else she'd like to say.
I think I'm, am I unmuted? Okay.
Nope, you're good.
Um, we have had a landscaper come out already. Um, as well as someone from the DPW met with us. And um we discussed the proper, how to properly grade the roadway uh or the area where the sidewalk is um to raise and like fill with loam and um elevate or pitch it properly so that the water will then drain toward the street and go down to wherever the stormwater so the stormwater drains. So we have uh looked into everything that we needed to look into as far as, you know, properly replacing with how much soil and whatever was required by the DPW.
I congratulate you on doing all that work. Thank you.
What about, what about the trees?
Um, I uh, there, I believe the trees are all fine that are there now. Um, once, they they should be fine when it's reseeded and loam. I don't really think that there should be any issues with the trees. Um, they have buckled the sidewalk in certain areas, but um the trees didn't seem to be an issue from the DPW standpoint or the landscaper. So I think the trees are fine.
Good. Thank you. We have another person that opened up their camera. Would you like to speak as well?
Yes, I would just want to um say.
But start by, start by introducing yourself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mike Martin, ninety nine Claritin Street. So I am one of the neighbors and I just want to say is that I'm not going to say much because I know that, you know, Christie and Jeff who are on here have done their due diligence. They have worked countless hours in working with the town to get the punch list, know exactly what needs to be done. So I just want um the board to know that even though I'm not saying much, my wife's not saying much. Um, we have, you know, full support of what the work that, you know, Christie and Jeff have put in and the countless hours they put in with meeting with the um different boards. So I just wanted to um let the board know that, you know, I'm, I'm in full agreement with them.
Fabulous, thank you. You got another thumbs up over here.
Okay. So seeing no more questions, I am going to ask for a motion in a second to close our public hearing. Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to close.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing for Margaret Sweet, second by Kevin Estes. All in favor? Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes.
And I forgot to um just say at the beginning, Lori Ann Miller is the um appointed alternate. Um, when we have issues with um the number of people, she is a former member as well, so um in a former chair. Okay, I think that that you have the the um the first day of this, and um I will put the necessary notes in the uh online portal that you um applied in tomorrow morning and then you'll be good to go. You can move forward. Um, I would contact DPW prior to having your um landscaper out there in case they want to observe or anything. I don't know what their, what their policy is on this. Um, it also should be stated for the record that um Tim Barber serves as the town's tree warden as the um as the director of of uh Public Works.
Okay, and now I would ask the board for a vote to approve this, correct?
Yes. Wait, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
We just closed the public hearing with the last vote and now need a motion to accept.
Uh, motion to accept the uh the changes to the uh approved definitive subdivision plan for the the Claritin Estates as listed in in the agenda.
Thank you, Kevin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lori Miller, all in favor? Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes, and I would like to congratulate the people in that area for getting together and doing a tremendous amount of work to get this done.
Thank you.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes, I feel the same way.
Kevin Mello, yes, absolutely. Thank you. You guys are.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
So.
Next, we go back into the regular, the regular meeting.
I think when we voted to get out of the public hearing, do we have to reopen? Yeah, I think that puts us back in.
Okay.
Uh, do we need a motion to?
No, I think you're all set.
Okay, all right. Um, so under administrative approval not required plan for eighty Slade Street.
So this next one um had come before you at the last meeting and this is for a, an A and R subdivision on um eighty Slade Street. We did um discuss and brought it to the technical reviewer committee to have them give comments. Um, and then uh we were going to uh possibly wait for um revised plans, but the owner has decided he wants to just come forward at this time. Um, there are some revisions, some minor revisions to the plan, and then depending on the, on the rest of this conversation tonight, we'll decide on how to move forward. Um, so this is a subdivision, as we were said, for eighty Slade Street, which is map one sixty five lot forty two. It's P N, P A N R twenty four six um on the online portal. And basically, um, the uh owner is on Mister Mister um Borges and he is on and he will give you a brief um uh explanation of what he's trying to do, but basically he's trying to um subdivide out a portion of the um of the property for use by a family member. Um, the property, as it stands, he is at the end of Slade Street, so it's a little bit different. And then um there is a paper street to the north of that called Philbrook Street. And so this frontage, this, the frontage for this lot would be coming from Philbrook Street. Um, there is an easement on the proposed A and R plan, um, which would have the um the the future property owner of the proposed lot A um coming across his property and his um driveway, so his driveway would become a common driveway to access the um to access the lot. There was another school of thought about possibly um extending Slade Street on Philbrook. And typically what the policy has been of the planning board is that they've gone fifty feet past the start of the property line. Again, because this is a family member and there is already a driveway and he's got um, the the new proposed lot B is still more than ten acres and uh uh, the proposed lot A is double of the size of that area. It, it did not seem like um it would be an issue to come across. Um, you did receive a letter in your um in your packet from the fire, the fire chief of that district. He has gone down there and looked at it. Um, the um DPW um has gone and looked at it. Um, I I don't know which all of the other groups. I know conservation, there are some concerns within a budding property owner that will be addressed as I, as it says in your report um at a later date. Um. Uh, I I don't know, um, I've tried to give you the um um, the square footage. I I will need some additional information like a change on the, on the title of the plan. I will need the the wetland area of the, of at least of, especially of the the wetland and the upland for the new lot A. The the main, the new lot B or the existing lot that this will all come from um is a rather large area or two. Um, we know he's already got the required, the required upland in that area. The whole site has not been flagged. Um, I don't know that in this particular case that that's necessary for that. It says, um just displayed where practical. So I mean, that's a matter of of a judgment call on your part. And then the other judgment call will be whether or not you are comfortable with the um with the access coming off of the, off of the driveway, Mister Borges's driveway. So I think it probably would be best if Mister Borges talked a little bit and then we can go from there. You want to just unmute yourself?
Okay.
There we go.
I think you can hear me now, right?
Yep, very good.
Okay, so I live at Slade Street. I have lived here for forty one years. Uh, the house that we currently live in is not only grandfathered in, but it's great-grandfathered in. It was built in nineteen ten at the foot of Slade Street. So the frontage for this house has always been Slade Street since nineteen ten. Uh, the lot that we're proposing for my daughter, uh, will go in thirty thousand square feet as opposed to the required fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, and uh we're going to go off the driveway that we currently have. I spoke to uh Mister Bassett and he um he says that the driveway is wide and as long as the driveway is fifteen feet, there's no issues with it. The fire chief has been down a couple of times and looked at it. He has no issues with getting actually my street, the Slade Street, which is a dead end out of all the streets in the area, which there's a ton of dead-end streets. Mine is the easiest access as far as a fire truck being able to come down, turn around and go back up. Um, let's see what else. The, as far as the wetlands, the uh, the main lot, which is eleven point nine seven acres, uh, I have well over two acres of upland. The proposed lot has been flagged and there's plenty of uplands on that. So um glad to answer any questions. And uh Christine has been uh, has been there to see it as well as uh Margaret Sweet as well as uh Ross.
So what I would say to you, planning board members, um I am comfortable with it. I think um the Philbrook Street has been on the books since the nineteen um, did I write the nineteen twenties or?
Nineteen ten.
I'm sorry, the Phil, Philbrook is, has been on our books since nineteen forty eight. Your piece is nine, is nineteen ten, you said. Spring Street coming down is, is twenty five. That also is a paper street coming down. And Slade Street has been um an accepted street, I probably, appears to be since nineteen forty eight. So when I look at the at the the subdivision regulations, I see that. So what you have to determine though, from the A and R, the A and R handbook is whether or not you consider it the adequacy of the way. I can tell you that DPW had expressed some concerns with regard to the um the Philbrook Street um coming off of that because that is not built to any town standards. It is rather narrow. That's why I have have um considered coming off of the the common driveway instead of off of Philbrook. But still getting, counting the frontages Philbrook. So um it's up to you. Uh, like I said, I would need on the plan, I would need to have a couple of things that I have put up um that I'll put in the uh portal tomorrow, basically just a title and then some additional little notes on the thing. So one of the main notes, the most important note probably, is the um, the purpose of this particular subdivision. And then obviously would, there would have to be some type of a note on the plan because it's going to be recorded as far as the accessing off of the common driveway so that no, or off of the easement area so that nobody um could do something different afterwards because it is very narrow in that way, in that piece of Philbrook, a little bit further down. And I don't want you to have any responsibility with regard to that.
Christine, the Phil, Philbrook passed my, my property, the part that's paved is almost twenty feet wide. Uh, I I know I had spoke to you about and I'm not going to, you know, mention any other developments, but there, it's wider than uh some of the other ones that I spoke to you about. And it is asphalt as opposed to gravel. And it's not going to be used because that portion of it, the part in front of my house is actually wider than a regular street. It's, it's about forty feet that where Slade Street is um, is a forty-foot road, but only uh
Right, the right of.
Twenty-two feet are paved.
Right, right. So that's why. I'm comfortable with them coming off of the driveway in this particular case. It's just going to all be on the plan so that we're covered when it's ultimately subdivided and when you're long gone and whatever, and people selling and buying and whatever, you know.
Well, I'm going to put something in there that they can't sell it. You gotta sell it to a family member.
Well, uh, as Mister Borges said, um, I did go down there. And I don't have a problem with this, uh Christine. I don't know about my other board members, but as long as uh his daughter's coming off the driveway um and it's not behind his house. Uh, I do feel bad for your chickens and your geese, so.
Now, they'll, they'll get relocated.
I hope you relocate them, okay?
They are, they're going to be closer to our house now.
Okay, I don't.
Make it easy for my wife to take care of them.
I mean, he's uh, he's doing what most family members would love to do today if they had the land because of how the housing is, is to give a lot to their child. So I don't have a problem with this. Um, I'm for it.
Christine, um, isn't it, hasn't it been?
Christine, isn't it, hasn't it been common practice, and maybe Laurie Miller can even chime in, that we allow two driveway, two lots off of a shared driveway?
Right, well, so the, the issue in this particular case is that it's technically wasn't started as a shared driveway, right? Initially, it was gonna be coming off of, off of Philbrook. So that's what, so that's why I'm comfortable with it, I think from a common driveway standpoint. You know, we call his a common driveway and then make it, you know.
Correct, correct. So we just make a note on the plan saying.
I've got to have an, I, that's why I'm saying I think you need to have a note on the plan. The other consideration was, he could have had less frontage in front of his property and made his property an estate lot, and then the other lot, the thing, but he, he's hesitant, Mister Borges is hesitant to do that. He doesn't want to be committed to that. There is quite a bit of wetland in this area, so I, I don't think it's gonna be further developed, but I mean, you know, I, I, I'm comfortable with the, with the two lots on one driveway. I don't want, I don't want them accessing off of Philbrook. I think that that opens up a can of worms that unless you're gonna put in, you know, the full thing to the current standards and, you know.
Yeah, and if I can just add, I, I, I've been here forty-one years when I bought this property in nineteen eighty-three. The intent was never to become a developer. As I told Christine and Margaret and Ross, if I had the means to buy my daughter a lot someplace else, that's what I would have done and I would have kept my property the way it is. But I don't have the means with the way the properties, you know, land is so expensive. And if this is something I can do for my daughter and her husband and their soon-to-be, soon-to-be-born child, that, that's what I, you know, that's what I want to do.
Okay, so I, I see no problem with this, looking at it from a common drive. Any other questions from the board?
Christine, this is, this is Kevin speaking, and, and a good chunk of his property is in zone two of the Aquifer overlay protection district.
Right.
How do you see the interplay between this, the, the proposed changes and, and building affecting the, the overlay district?
As far as, as far as his property goes, very little of it is, is developed at this point, so I am comfortable with that piece of it. I mean, further down the line, if there, you know, depending on what else happens and what else happens, then you'll have to look more closely at the, at the aquifer portion of this and how that plays out and any future things that might happen. But for right now and for this particular setup, I think it's perfectly reasonable.
Okay. Hey, any further questions? So I would entertain a motion in the second. Keep in mind, any notes that may be, we may want to add to this.
So, so the notes would be, depending on whichever way you do, the, the title of the plan, approval not required, plan prepared for Gil and Hilda Borges, the total area in square feet for the wetland, as well as the upland on the proposed lot. A. And then the purpose, per, per the subdivision regulations, one point three oh eight, the purpose of this A and R should be clearly stated on the plan along with the calculation of upland and wetland. And then, like I said, that you want to make sure that the easement is shown on this, so you want to show that that's where the access will be. That's gonna be, it's said on there, but I, I would put it in the notes as well, just to cover, just to cover your bases.
Well, I would make a motion to approve with the notes and easement on the plan, as Christine has stated. So I would, that would be my motion, as long as Christine make sure that we have all those notes on the plan. I have no problem with this, I make a motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept?
Second?
Second by Kevin Estes, motion made by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Laurie Miller?
I don't vote on this.
Okay.
I vote just on the public hearing.
Okay. Kevin Mello, yes. We want the record show Nick, Nick Cyclepatis is absent.
Okay, so we will put the notes up tomorrow of exactly what you need to put on the plan and then get us the new Mylar and the new plan so that we can get things signed, okay?
All right, have a good night.
Good night, thank you.
Okay. So moving on to number two. Open planning board seat. So I asked for this to be put on. Christine, did you have something to?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted me to just say, so I did reach out to the, to the select board when this first happened. We have sent a letter to them from the planning board on April twenty-second as a follow-up after the, the April elections requesting, we do have three applicants, or we had three applicant, applications that came in. The select board had asked about meeting tonight, but the public hearing portion of this meeting had already been scheduled. So they were trying to figure out another date, they didn't want to do it until after town meeting, they being the select board. I was asked to give the former town administrator some questions. So they're same type of questions that we typically ask always at the start of an appointment. Basically just three questions. The select board was going to discuss it tonight, their next meeting is scheduled for July twenty-ninth. Both boards have to meet together to, in order to move forward with appointing somebody. So there's an opportunity to interview the people, I don't know if they're still interested, I presume so, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. So, but then the chair of the select board wasn't sure, he was not gonna be able to be present on the twenty-ninth. So now they're saying maybe July twenty-second, which would be your next planning board meeting. We don't have anything on the agenda quite yet. There was something today with a site plan review. So either you could have your meeting after, or you could maybe have a meeting the following thing. But I can't give you an answer, bottom line, I can't give you an answer on when this is until tomorrow when I get in the office and we find out what the select board decided to do and how to move forward. We would need a quorum present at the meeting in person, whether it be the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth, in order for you to be part of the interview process.
Thank you. So I also wanted to discuss this with the full, with, with the board, unfortunately, we don't have a full board. I have discussed it. I have thought about it at length with, and obviously I was looking to get this done as soon as possible. I know when I got appointed to the board this way, it was a very speedy process in the sense that my first meeting was in early May after the April. I, I believe I was appointed two to three meetings after Stanley Mickelson moved up to the select board. With the long period of time we're weighed in, plus the fact that Christine is leaving us. And that search itself could take six to eight months. I know the last time, if history repeats itself, the last two times we had this process, it was quite lengthy. I honestly feel that it may be the best decision that we thank the candidates for applying, we ask that they pull out papers come April and they go, the, rather than being appointed, they go the elected route. And we leave that seat vacant because we are not gonna be looking at making any recommendations without a planner. We're not looking to do any zoning bylaw changes. We are basically gonna be working day to day and processing the work that comes in. So I, I don't feel that there's a need to fill this position.
I, I totally agree with you, Kevin, because it's been this long now. And I think it would be too much for the, for the present board without a planner and getting a new person to sit on this. And I feel that they could also, as you suggested, if they really want to come on, then they should run for, in April. When I ran this last time, nobody ran against me, there were people that wanted to go on the board, but they just did not want to run a campaign. And I feel if you want to be on the board, then, and, and, and time permits, then you should run a campaign and people should elect you. So I agree, I don't think at the present time, we should get another board member. Laurie's always willing to help us out. And we, we have four members, that's, that's how I feel. What about Kevin? What do you feel, Kevin?
Kevin Estes, me?
Yes, you, Kevin Estes.
Yeah, well, don't forget two Kevins here, as few board members as we have.
Well, I know, but Kevin already gave his, Kevin won, gave his.
So my, my thought on this, I, I really did not consider the fact that somebody new coming in without a planner to, to, to give them some additional guidance that, that I enjoyed when, when I was just cutting teeth, first go around. I, I think, I think that makes a lot of sense to, to try and fill the position of, of planner first before bringing somebody new on board. And if it, even if we don't have a, anybody that's lining up to, to run for it, then we'll, we'll, we'll deal with it after the case, you know. It's regretful, I guess, but, you know, it, it is what it is and you know, especially if we're not gonna be doing anything, any quote-unquote heavy lifting or big changes, then it's, it's kind of a, a, a smart way to go. So at first I had some reservations until I thought about it. But really, I think, you know, we, we should have, when somebody new comes on, on board, it's very helpful to have the active planner.
It is, Kevin.
Okay, and, and the other thing too is, i- if we fill this board seat, they're gonna have, you know, they're gonna help select the next town planner, yet they have no town planner, no planning board experience whatsoever, which I feel would be detrimental to, to us. So I think we should ask that the three candidates be reached out to and let them know, thank you for your interest, and we hope you pull papers, because don't forget, you know, yes, it would be an election, and I'm sorry, don't remember how much longer, so they'd be, we'd be looking for somebody to fill Chris O'Neill's remainder term from April of twenty-five to whenever his term is up. I don't know if Christine's got that right there.
I do not have that here in front of me right now.
Okay, so it would be for his term.
Kevin, he, they only fill his term until the next election.
Oh, regardless, right, that's right.
Right, they only fill his term until the next election.
To his next election.
No, to the next town election.
Yeah, April.
Correct, correct, so if we filled the, his seat today, that person would be the incumbent for the remainder of his term come April anyway. Because we, every year it's the same, so I'm up in two, I'm up next April. So whoever runs.
He would be running to finish his term.
To finish his term, which may only be three more years, because Margaret has came on again. I'm up next year, Nick was up the last year. So it would be the remain, he, they would have to run, pull papers in April anyway, whoever got appointed now. But they would be pulling papers as the incumbent, which there's no contested races. And as I've said before, two terms for all seats in government. This is the end of my second term. So unless nobody else ever pulls papers, I will pull papers. But if someone else pulls papers come April, I'm retiring from this job. So, and I'll be looking to terrorize another department. Or, or possibly, so I firmly believe in two terms. So we will see what happens come April. So two of the three could pull papers, get fifty signatures, one would be in for five years to cover my, my seat. And then the other would be in, let, let's just assume it's three years to cover Chris O'Neill's remainder. And then in three years, they would have to pull papers yet again. So, so that is good, that is, I don't feel that we need a vote, this was a discussion. I do need to reach out, Chris Vitale, Vitale has reached out to me. So I will meet with him and share the board's views.
So you don't want me to draft a letter or anything, you're gonna handle it that way?
I, I will just, I will discuss it, and if he needs something from us more formal, I will see you.
Okay, 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 so, and then even for the applicants, for the ones that we do currently have, okay?
Let, let me talk to Chris, because technically, the proper procedure, I know some applications came in one way, some came in the other, but we'll reply to them accordingly, the way they should, I believe they should have all come to the select board.
They all went to the, they all should have gone to the select board ultimately, and the one that did come into our office, I sent to the select board.
So I think it would be best for the select board, because they also have to agree to this. Even though the, the four of us are agreeing to this, the select board must agree to this also. So I would probably ask Chris that they send out the thank you, but, you know, see you in April.
Very good.
So that leads us on to the, the next discussion item that I asked to be here, the income, the interim planner. I, I just need to make the board aware, I don't want to be considered going off rogue. Again, I need to discuss Chris Vitale, we need to fill, have an interim planner. The contract doesn't affect this board, the, the fees, the amounts, that type of thing. So that will be another discussion that we have to have. So I just want to make the board aware of that, if there's any questions from the board, let me know. Okay. So that really takes care of that, so we'll move on to administrative item minutes of June tenth. We have any questions? Can I have a motion?
Motion to acknowledge and file?
And a second?
Second?
I have a motion to acknowledge and file by Kevin Estes, second by Margaret Sweet, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Correspondence. Any questions on correspondence?
So I just wanted to point out to you, the first thing that is in the package is an update from one of the, the subdivisions called Ledgemont Estates Trust, and they had provided information as all, as all of them are supposed to do. We also had received an email, but I haven't received the official notification yet from the owner, the developer of Westview Estates. But they have also recently had elections and we have been notified of, of who will be handling the items there. Ledgemont Estates, like, like some of the other ones today, ultimately, we will also be looking for some type of a street acceptance policy. And they have, they have started the process of preparing their, their application and, and working with their council to get something into the town for town meeting at some point.
Okay. So do we have a good handle on who's who in all the various?
We do not always get notifications of all of. We do not always get notifications of all of them. And there, like I said, there have been a number of, um, issues over the past few years with, uh, who some of these things are since twenty twenty, um. So I'm trying to get a handle on all of that stuff and, and Ross will be, um, he, he's working on doing some of the surety updates and stuff like that. So we'll have that, we'll have, um, which things had no money left, but still private roads and will probably always remain private roads because either all of the lots were given away or the surety was released or different things that happened. So we're trying to just go through each one. Um, it's been, become very clear that there are a couple of issues that have been since like early two thousands in particular. Um.
Okay.
And I get you the list, so you'll have it.
So Ross will be able to work on that in your, uh, your absence?
So yes, and Ro- Ross is on the meeting tonight, um, cause I hadn't had him up until now on a, on a meeting. So this is just the first meeting he's been listening to, to get comfortable, um, to get an idea of both a public hearing and a, a regular just meeting that we have, um, and the requirements. Um. So um, just to let him see it this, this time. Yes. So he's working, he's working on that. We're working with, um, in particular, um, well during the the planner's report. We'll finish with this first. So I have no other issues with the correspondence.
Okay. So I'll need a motion to.
Motion to acknowledge and file.
Motion to.
I'll make the motion. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
No, I did the last one. You do this one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to acknowledge and file.
So I have a motion to acknowledge and file by Margaret Sweet, second by Kevin Estes, all in favor? Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Okay. VR information, zoning board of appeals.
So is there, there was nothing from the zoning board of appeals at this time?
Okay, um. Subcommittee reports, any, anyone have any? I know I have none.
None.
No, I have one, a meeting tomorrow, so next time I'll have something.
Okay. Um. So let's go right into planner's report.
So the planner's report, um, the first thing that we had was, um, uh, Margaret had asked at the last meeting, um, when we were given the update about the the Batumska, I'm not sorry, not Batumska Road, um, I always say it wrong, um. Oh my goodness, I can't think. Anyway, she had asked about how, what happens with, um, the, some of the labeling of the street numbers if, if somebody does not have, um, their, their property clearly marked. Um, so we did, Ross and myself did go over the procedure with the fire chiefs and the safety officer at the last technical reviewer meeting. And, um, it, the safety officer basically explained to us if they get called to a property and it's not marked, then they can give a violation. And that has been the way it had been done in the past. He's not, he's no longer does that piece of it. So he doesn't know if the violations are still going out. The safety, the, the fire chiefs had said they put the red, the red, um, numbering system, if that needs to be. We do have one that's being changed right now, like I said, um. Obviously anything going forward, anytime that there's a structure on the property, then it's clearly has to be marked in the, um, the new, um, director of inspectional service, uh, services or Randy has, um, has said that, that he will not sign off on any occupancy without any of that. Um, it's been brought to everybody's attention now. Um, it doesn't necessarily solve the problem of all of the things that are not until somebody has an emergency, which I'm rather uncomfortable with. Um, but we at least have what the procedure is. And then, um, the safety officer had referred back to, um, an actual, um, thing within the general bylaws, so chapter one fifty six, and that speaks to the assignment of building numbers. Um, the display and the size of the display of the numbers and then the, um, the violation, the notice of the number and then the violation and penalties if you do not have a number. So I think probably it's best to bring it up to all of the boards and commissions or at least the select board so that everybody's notified of it. We do not have a, we, we do not have the authority to go out and grant, to do violations, um. You know, like I said, if they stumble upon them, then that's one thing, but otherwise, but I think getting the word out, it's in everybody's best interest to have them. The way the, um, the online permitting system is now, in order to apply for any type of a building permit in any, any way, shape or form, you have to have a, um, a, a street assignment number. And that starts with DPW. That is available online, that application now. Um, and then the, the whole process goes from there. Um, again, you can't get a number until you have, until you're ready to build on a lot, until you have a building permit ready to go. You can't get a building permit until you have the number. So there are kind of checks and balances there, but for the old properties with old establishments, we, that's a little bit more of an issue. I can tell you over the last year, Ross has taken up the, um, uh, the, uh, um, the assignment, the, the, um, necessary um, steps with the nine one one as far as updating their records. So as we find things, he is correcting and updating and we're making sure we've got everything in line. There were some things that were changed with the assessor's office today. For instance, there was something else with the, um, DPW. Um, so nine one one is getting the latest and greatest as we update and make sure everything's all set. So from that standpoint, that's where the planning board is involved. We're involved at the beginning when the, any type of an A and R or subdivision happens, because the, the lots are assigned by the tax assessor's office. And then with, once people apply for any type of a permit from, then that goes to DPW. So then we bring everything back together in order to get it moving through the rest of the process, um. But it doesn't solve the, the basic problem. So I think we just need to get the word out that there is a potential for for penalties and that it's in everybody's best interest to make sure that their properties are clearly mocked and identified. So in case they have an emergency, people will know where to go.
Can we do a, um, can we do a, a small campaign, a public service, you know, uh?
DCTV is, DCTV is always looking for things, so we definitely could have something happen here to get the word out, sure.
District two has a beautiful electronic message in board and they also make those little red signs, I believe. You can order your signs through them. Um, so they could drum up some business. I'm sure they're not making very much off of those.
Chat. Uh, there we go. Um, yeah, so we could also put it on the front thing and then, um, I can't tell you that. Maggie, yes. And Maggie could get something to the newspaper. She's the, um, she's the coordination, communications coordinator. So that is another option.
Well, thank you. I think that's very important and thank you for taking that on Christine because, uh, you know, especially out in the country, it's very difficult if you, it's at night and there's no way to know what house number you're going to.
It i- it is, and it, it is very interesting because like I said, the one that Ross has been working on recently where, you know, they had A, B and C and A and B or C and D were mixed up and, you know, that's, that's precious minutes wasted, especially when you're out there somewhere. Um. So I think that that's, that was a good question to ask. And I, I think it definitely, it can't hurt to get the word out there and get everybody moving on it. Um, and then as far as the, um, the rest of the, um, planner's report, I just wanted to kind of give you an update on some things that are happening recently. Um, Target came back in. We had originally had Target, um, um, in twenty twenty-two, um, they had come in about, uh, um, their drive up parking area pickup. Um, they have since decided to take away the canopy and they've reduced the number of spaces that they're gonna designate and, um, they're not gonna show it the same way. So they're going down from twenty-four to eighteen and then they're removing the, um, the parking canopy. What they did add was some solar drive up beacons, um, on the plans, which were on the original plans. But, um, uh, this seemed to be something that could definitely be handled administratively and they are, they are moving with, um, the building department on that one now. Um, four commerce way, the batting cages, um, DPW has signed off on that. There are still some outstanding things that the engineer is working with the board of health on. Um, I spoke to Mr. Delgado today about that. Planning is comfortable with all of that. So, um, we'll just need some, some, you know, finalized plans once they work out things with, with, uh, the board of health. I'm not sure exactly what the permit is with the board of health that they're working on. Um, but from a, from a planning site plan review site, we are sat. Um, two commerce way, that was the Swartz, um, appliance warehouse, that engineer or that, uh, project manager had reached out last week about getting sign offs. He's got temporary, um, occupancy now that he's had that for quite a while. Um, they had not had any, um, any parking lot painting or any signs or any landscape. So I told him until we see some of that in it, we're definitely, we can't even make a list. There's nothing out there. So they'll be reaching back out within the next week or two. Um, the other one is one thousand Reed Road, uh, the Brunel boat stands. Uh, Mr. Rayom had reached out about going over the setbacks in that area, um, with, with regard to some of the driveway and some of the turning things, um, the drive, the setback in the back uh, is to a residential. So there's some, a little bit different requirements for that piece of it, because it does up, but up against a residential. I did direct him to the director of inspectional services, um, and, uh, he was told to, um, provide a plan to show, I mean, he's not going to be in compliance, so I'm prob, I'm thinking he's gonna probably have to go back to the ZBA. Um, because he, he's gonna need some type of a setback relief, but he wanted to just come to the planning board and get setback relief from you. And it's not appropriate, it's not an appropriate action in this particular case. Um, I had told you about Legmont Estates and them giving the update and then they'll be moving ahead with their street acceptance, um, application. Um, we did give them the application and the policy. That application comes from the select board office. Um, it's not, it, we began, the planning board gets it to review as one of the reviewing departments, but, um, it, 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 I don't think it's on the online portal as of yet, um, so that one will happening. And then like I said, one of the homeowners who is not a, um, one of the newly elected trust, uh, elected members of the trust for the Westview Estates had, had reached out. Um, and I, um, I have not heard anything from Westview Estates yet about the, uh, their, their, um, election process. So I will be reaching out to them within the coming days via email, just to get something formal. Um, the other thing that was not on here that happened today was we had a meeting um, with the, uh, finance director's office, um, Gary regarding, and then, um, Cheryl from the treasurer's office regarding the, um, a proposed, uh, letter of credit for Bakerville Vineyards project. Um, that is a seven lot subdivision from a few years ago. That was the one that came in last year for a late recording. Um, and then they were doing some work in the right of way without permits and there was some things going on um, that were in violation of some of the conservation things. Um, there still is not much in the way of infrastructure there. They have put in an application, um, which Ross received today for, um, some lot releases, but we need to get, we need to get the surety in place, because it's, you know, uh, uh, almost two thou, two million dollars. Um, because there has been so little put in place and then we need to get a clear indication of what lots they're looking at to have released. So that is, that application is not set yet, but and, um, I had some concerns regarding the paperwork that we had gotten in from the bank. So I went to Gary so we could discuss that further. Um. And then I think that those are the biggest things right now.
Okay. Okay, very good. Um, so chairperson report really was done through discussion, uh, the open, um, plan board seat in the interim contract. So that's pretty much all that I have, uh, for that right now. So does anyone else have anything else?
Oh, the only thing that I forgot was with regard to the tax assessor maps, the planning, the planning department, um, has handled the tax assessor maps since, um, Mike O'Reilly had left the, um, town. And again, and that's because the, um, the subdivisions and the A and Rs, that's where the, this is where the lots start. Um, so we assist that department and we take the lead on it, because now that mapping um, meets the requirements of the state. So it gets submitted by Ty and Bond as our consultant right now. Um, and it had to be done for the twenty twenty-three, all of those updates. Um, and so that is well underway. It's almost completed. Ross was just giving a couple of last minute um, revisions to the, um, uh, to the consultant. We got the go ahead from the assessor's office today on a few things. And we were getting an updated, what they call a KAMA report. Um, it's just a, basically it's an Excel spreadsheet that ends up getting submitted to the state along with the required map revisions. Um, so we are moving that ahead as we've done the last few years and that process seems to be going very well as, um, as, as we've kind of worked through many of the kinks that had happened with, with the transitions from previous, previous individuals involved in the situation.
Okay. All right, anything from the board? All right, everyone's favorite agenda item, number seven.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn by Kevin Estes, second by Margaret Sweet. All in favor? Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
So your next meeting is July twenty-second as it stands right now, okay?
So, thank you.
Good night. Thank you.